It is political season and it's time to have conversations with candidates. It so happens that the next group of conversations that we are going to be having will be with candidates who are running for Plymouth County Commissioner. So happens joining us for this conversation happens to be a current county commissioner, Mr. Greg Hanley. Greg, welcome to the conversation.
Thank you for having me, Kevin. Good to see you again.
You got it. So just we can't assume that everybody knows who Greg Hanley is. Tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
I'm Greg Hanley. I'm the current county commissioner. I've been the county commissioner for 12 years. I am a graduate of Norwich University and Archbishop Williams. I've served as a city councillor in the city of Quincy, a selectman in the town of Pembroke. I sat on the state plumbing board for nine years. I just concluded 12 years on the Board of Governors of Quincy College and the last two as the chairman. I'm involved with a lot of charities like the Friends of the Charity Guild of Brockton. Just went to their gala the other night. Wonderful time. And I do a lot of things to keep me occupied. I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus, a member of the Elks and a lot of the civic groups. And most recently, and I'm very proud to say I'm a member of the John, Father John Murphy, Division Nine Ancient Order of Hibernians. So I could keep going, Kev, but I think that'll give your audience enough to go by.
I think I would agree. Let's, let's ask you, you have served three terms as a county commissioner? Why do you want a fourth?
Well, there's still work to be done. As you recall, Kevin, I think you've been with me the whole way. I'm reporting all the time, getting together, giving you updates on the county. When I first came into office, there was a $750,000 structural deficit and a referendum question on the ballot as to whether or not county government should exist. My predecessors decided not to run for office and I decided to run. However, it was worse than I thought when I got there. When I got there, we found out that the county was in litigation with the Plymouth County Retirement Board. Hadn't made any payments towards employee benefits for retirees and we were facing a lawsuit. Now, I can't blame it on my predecessors. I really blame it on the fact that the Department of Corrections had taken over the jail, but left up behind the legacy costs and the way the county is structured. We weren't set up for a bulk payment of those things. So, you know, I came into office with ideals. I wanted to do countywide trash and countywide solar, which we were able to do, and I'll talk a little bit more about them. Why they did, and we actually got them to a public private partnership. And for reasons that I can explain to you, they, they weren't allowed to go forward. And having said that, you know, we had to devise a way to pay those legacy costs. So first order of business wasn't my agenda. It was the agenda of the county. The county at the time to pay its bills was selling assets one time. Problems in a budgetary year, they were actually selling land to pay bills. And that was just something that wasn't proper. And so for us, and I came in, if you remember Dan Pallotta, he and I were freshmen together. He was a Republican. I was a Democrat and partisan politics never played a role in what we did together. We had, our work was cut out for us. We ran on a couple of ideas, but at the end of the day, we had to get diverted to the attention that we needed to pay for today, which was to solve that problem. So we had gone to our friends in the legislature and created some legislation that allowed for, and not only for our county, but for all the counties, for the state through its deeds excise tax to allow us to pay off the legacy costs of all the employees of the county who had been retired that were abandoned in the acquisition by the Department of Corrections of the jail. So it took us about five years, but we stabilized it. We avoided people not getting paid and we avoided a cost of the lawsuit. So that was day one on the job. So from there, we can talk a little bit more about things as, as you bring them up.
Let's probably ask the most daunting question, I think, that you probably hear out on the campaign trail. Because I feel that the county commissioner race isn't one of those ones like state representative, state senate, governor. It's not one of those well-known areas of government that I think folks know a lot about. What is it that the county commissioners do?
Well, we're regional, we're a regional form of government. Up until the time of CARES and ARPA, we maintain the courthouses. One in Hingham, one in Brockton and one in Wareham. We oversee the healthcare with, of employees for the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. We oversee the retirement system with the Plymouth County Retirement. We created the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. We also oversee that. We oversee the 4H program and we do a number of regional programs. ARPA is the current one and the one we just retired was CARES. We've got mobile integrated health going on with firefighters and Bruce the ambulance. We have a cybersecurity program in conjunction with our friends at Bridgewater State. These are some, some things that this group has brought on. I mean, I can go on and on with the things we do to liaise with our regional partners and in the communities. 26 towns, one city. There's a few more to list, but I don't want to take up our time and we can bring it up as we go along.
Is there enough transparency in what the commissioners do? If not, is there anything that could be done to improve that?
Yeah, transparency with this administration has been a little sketchy. There's some, some partisan politics going on, but I don't want to really talk about that. Transparency is key. By promoting the county, we get to go on listening to our member communities. We go into, it's, it's fine when someone can drop off a check for ARPA. But along the way, if we listen to what they have to say and do, I think the problem is when we're homegrown, when we're having our own meetings, we don't record them. And I petitioned the board and they have been denied to get access so that we can get on either your program or, you know, another platform to broadcast our meetings. I think that's the basic thing you can ask for. A conservation commission meeting in any city or town is advertised, as is the planning board. So why not the county? We do have the resources. And one of my opponents was actually in his freshman year, very vocal about doing it. We acquired the equipment, but then when he became chairman, he decided that access would be at his discretion. And that's not the way it works. It rarely works with us as a board. But it's his administration and I work on vehicles like this to get our messaging out. You know, like I said, it's okay to take a bow handing out a check, but that's not really any work involved with that. That's just, you know, accepting accolades for, you know, a program that we administer.
Yeah, let's talk a little bit about the CARES Act, which was something that was, that began, that was under the Trump administration. And then you had the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, that was created under the Biden administration. This was to help communities through and beyond COVID. And I feel as though the county has shown its, its worth when there were people questioning as to what does county government do? What can it do for us? And I think many feel as though when the question is put forth in a contrite way is should county government stay or go? A very tired question. I think that the county has proven that it should stay. Knowing that ARPA is probably close to sun setting soon and giving out the final dollars. What can the county do to build upon the success?
Well, I want to bring you back to a time, Kevin, if you can let your audience know. Google Plymouth County CARES Act from April 27th to May 1st and read the headlines about why and how Plymouth County came about being the lone county. We're federally recognized by the federal government as an agency that was eligible for these distribution of funds. And at the time, Governor Baker wanted all of the funds. And we stood our ground and we, it was pretty lonely. That's when you're seeing Greg Hanley and Dan Pallotta meld together along with our colleague Sandra Wright. And we were in the Foxhole and we developed a program of reimbursement, which was a little different from what the state was doing. The state was giving out funds to communities and then giving them the rules after they had administered the program. We didn't feel that was something we could do. And a lot of credit goes to Dan Pallotta and especially our treasurer, Tom O'Brien. You know, they said we didn't have the bandwidth or the intellectual property to administer this. And as it turns out, Plymouth County had received about 109 million to distribute. Our overhead to distribute that money was 1%. And now fast forward to the end of CARES, we were recognized by Congress as having the lowest amount of overhead to distribute monies given. And we were recognized by Congress. Okay. Contrast that with the Commonwealth and the legislature clawing back the governor's ability to disburse those funds. They had a 37% overhead. And they created a bureaucracy and it's funny, by contrast, I was at the time of CARES. I had a stint as the Holbrook Town Administrator. And I had monies in, in live COVID in my office that the difference between the county program, which was spend the money being reimbursed, that you had to go and get permission from the state before you could purchase anything. I had live COVID in my treasurer's office. I had to close it down. I had a petition and emergency requisition of a kiosk where you could go in and not have anyone, you know, direct contact. We also put cameras and key fobs because the public was just walking into offices and, you know, the, the spread of COVID was real back then. And now it's, it's still real, but it's under control. But the problem is when I submitted my reimbursement, I was denied by the state. And I, I know for a fact, Kevin, that those types of expenses under Plymouth County ARPA were allowed. So the goal of Plymouth County throughout CARES was to deal with all our member communities. We had a formula and it was almost the same formula we have by the county, how it's set up with the size of your population and your valuation. And we, and we spread that money out with a formula. And so when it came to the end where some money wasn't spent, then we turned to our regional partners. If you recall, here's the biggest thing that I remember during CARES is that the governor would not allow a vaccination center to be put up in Plymouth County. Okay. Cause we were standalone and believe me when I say it, the battle was real between the governor's angst and our success, because the more we were successful, if you go back to that period of time where we were criticized, we put together with remaining funds with the help of the town of Marshfield at the Marshfield Fair, with the firefighters, the sheriff's department, we had a regional drive-through vaccination center. Okay. It was the best in the state. We were the model for them to change their ways. Now, remember this, Kevin. Fenway Park is a venue and then Patriots was a venue and they were getting paid to do that. Okay. So you wonder where the money went under the state's program. And I don't mean to be cynical, but you're conjuring up emotions that, you know, when you're in it for failure or success, we only cared about our residents. And that's why we set it up. And I'll tell you, it was a tremendous thing. And it was, again, they, they ended up duplicating our efforts with a drive-through. But hats off to, to our team. Again, Tom O'Brien, fantastic steward of the program. My colleagues, we voted to support it and move that money. And, and that brought us to the end of CARES. Next came ARPA. I was the chairman and this time around, other counties, four other counties decided to join us, Kevin. And so the economy of scale that was gained by that is this oversight that goes on with this, with the federal US Treasury, with all the reporting. So we contracted with a legal team, Mintz Levin, our auditing team, which was Clifton Lawson. And then, I'm sorry, our accountants were Clifton Lawson, Sullivan and Powers were our auditors. Okay. So it's a foolproof system. We had gone through it. But the thing is with the cost of it, it was shared between four counties now. So all of our overhead to administer it was cut in half. So, you know, that we had the template, we led the way with those folks. And I would ask you to, to reach out to those other counties and ask them how they have done, because I know how we've done against the state. And right now, I'm, I'm happy to say we're coming to the closure of that. The program ends December 31st. We have to encumber all the money with a purchase order and then it'll continue for one more year after that for oversight and make sure and guarantee to those member communities that the US Treasury doesn't claw back any money because they went through our program at Plymouth County. I know that was a long answer, but that's what it is.
And it was a valid one. So we'll continue on. Is there an issue or a series of issues that are important to this race?
Of course there are. You know, again, we're still in the midst of administering the program, but along the way, we have to create new revenue streams. And one of the things we did this year is we created two councils. One for the electeds of our 26, 27 communities. And then one for the executive branch, the managers, the administrators and the mayor of Brockton. And so we have separate meetings with them and we asked them to identify regionalization efforts that we as the county can administer. One of them is the Bureau of Pond Management. How many communities do you know that have water that needs to be dealt with? And whether it's, it's mostly swimming and, you know, recreational use, but there are potable water sites. And one of the things that we just recently, we just came back from our sister county program over in Donegal. And we learned about desalinization projects. Okay. Now, if you think about this, Kevin, with PFAS everywhere and everyone's mandate to clean things up, we went over there and got information on how the government of Ireland, the Republic of Ireland, the North in the Republic, get together on taking salt water and converting it to potable water that has no chemicals in it. So that's a recent development. But the Bureau of Pond Management will be dealing with algae growths and spurs, kicking it, you know, so that you can actually use it recreationally or for water consumption. So that's an example of thinking outside the box. It's something we're moving forward. We have a pilot program going on with Mobile Integrated Health, which partners up with Bruce the ambulance, the professional firefighters of Massachusetts and a gentleman named David Chen. And what that is, Kevin, is the hospitals in the area, if you get discharged and returned to the emergency room within 48 hours, they get fined. So we're trying to create a revenue stream that helps the county administer the program, solves the problem of the hospitals and the communities or prevents them from having to pay serious fines. So I think the economy of skill that's gained there is that we're going into the homes instead of folks going to the emergency rooms. And so when you do that, you free up, you know, obviously trauma and triage, acute care in the emergency rooms and a wellness check in, in who we're partnered with. Again, the professional fires of Massachusetts, all of them are paramedics. So as opposed to an EMT, they have the right to discharge medicines and prescribe and to have IVs. And that, that's a tremendous program. It started under Congressman Dala Hunt during CARES. However, the source of money wasn't available for us to actually get involved with that. As a pilot to the pilot, the town of Hanover did it. And during CARES, we had given them an ambulance and they had the bandwidth internally to just do a regular visit of Hanover residents. Nothing to do with, you know, going to the emergency room, but actually checking on people who are identified as having COVID, the invalid, the elderly. And it was a tremendous success and that was a platform for the bigger program. So that's certainly going on. One program that I'm in the midst of discussing, and I told you I'd return to this, but at one time the county had procured countywide trash. And because the transfer station behind the Plymouth Police Station had been polluted, there was a lawsuit that stopped the program on behalf of the town of Plymouth as to who owned the cleanup and the responsibility of it. We had to go to court. We got summary judgment. And the courts ruled that it was a percentage share, I believe it was 70/30, that they had to, Plymouth had to, where they taught, treated it as a 21E thing with it. The land, the membrane had failed. That thing had trans, came into the police station, if you recall, knocked out a couple of police officers in it and it brought that program to an end. And because at the time, neither the county nor the town had the resources to clean the site, I have now identified an opportunity with a company that I dealt with in Holbrook that cleaned the landfill and they cleaned it and charged tipping fees to contractors to bring in clean fill. And then that's a, a pop. And that similarly is something we're looking at. Mostly just for the cleanup, but what the post closure use will be is something that we're going to partner up with the town of Plymouth with to possibly resurrect a transfer station that DEP has allowed to exist there. So that's in their very early stages and it'll probably happen after this election. And whether I'm the, you know, commissioner or not, I'm going to pass that along. Derek Brandy is the great guy to work with. He's the Plymouth manager. We have a great board over there too. They're, they're partnering up with us and a couple of different things. You know, the 100 acres is under contract now just for due diligence. We're collecting 150,000 a year from Boston Self Properties to allow them to do feasibility. And whether or not we're able to move forward with them. We would be remiss had we not taken advantage of at least an opportunity. It started out as a racetrack and we heard from the town of Plymouth, it got denied on a referendum. And now they're pivoting to do something more on a kind of a colony place kind of concept with housing and entertainment and shopping. But again, we haven't gotten the final word on that, but we're working closely with the town. So that's something that's in the future. And, you know, there's a lot to do. And, you know, until the work is done, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep running because I've, you know, lived through the good times and the bad.
Well, you mentioned these new revenue streams. Do you feel these new revenue streams are going to be enough to fortify the county's annual budget or can more be done to be able to maintain the staff that you have that does things, these many programs that the county offers?
Yeah. The biggest problem we have, Kevin, is the fact that, you know, the way county is financed, we get money from deeds excise, which is 10 cents on the dollar. We petitioned three times Governor Baker and, you know, filed legislation to change that formula to 27 cents. And in doing so, we could have solved a lot of problems. We thought with this last effort with this administration, the Maury Haley administration, that we, we were going to get a layup, but as it turned out, we didn't. So we have to pivot and find alternative revenue sources that are perpetual, that are built into who we are programmatically. You know, the rest of the money comes from the valuations of the communities. And gotta be honest with you, Kevin, with those restrictions, we have done so much more than I did on day one with about maybe a $2 million difference over 12 years in our budget. So if you think of that and you think of the services we provide and we've rendered, I mean, certainly the turning point for us was CARES and ARPA. Prior to that, there was a lot of mistrust in the county because, you know, we were on the verge of bankruptcy. And, you know, they didn't trust us, but then we proved it. So moving forward, the future is bright and more we can do on regionalization. You know, we do a vehicle bid for public vehicles that benefits our communities. We do a fuel bid. We're doing bulk purchasing. We do salt purchases. We administer grants from the federal government that if you have a, a community that has a budget that has a line item for a grant, that was, first of all, the, the line item would be taxed. And if a grant comes in to relieve that taxation, they get to redistribute that money in their budget. So, you know, things like that. Again, Kev, I can see by the look on your face, this is boring stuff. But to me, I'm kind of a geek when it comes to it and problem solving financially, programmatically, policy wise, these are the things that, you know, for me, it turned out in the beginning as a hobby, but now it's my profession. So, you know, I'm gonna keep it that way.
Well, I'm trying to maintain a stoic face while you're, you're sharing all this information with me. Folks, folks can't necessarily see that. We get a couple of more questions, few more minutes left with you. I think you've probably talked about a lot of different things. Fair enough, because it's a question I'm going to ask all candidates. And that is, is what new ideas do you feel you can bring to the county?
Well, right off the bat, the Pond Bureau, the Pond Man, sorry. Pond Water Management Bureau is something I think is going to be invaluable to communities. Right now, the way it's structured, the member communities will pay a fee for us for administrative costs. So we can hire the proper personnel to manage the, the water quality, the chemical treatment of water. But this new information, we just got back, two weeks ago, John Buckley and I traveled with a delegation from Plymouth County that included registered Tim White, Senator Mike Brady, Councillor Jack Lally. Mr. Creedon was supposed to join us, but due to health issues, wasn't able to. But we go over annually, it's an exchange of economic development ideas, culture and tourism. As you know, we've hosted the Blue Green Economy Conference here with Dr. Stephen Cove from Plymouth. And last year we brought a kelp farmer over from Ireland who was able to address the member communities at the conference on his product, which is fertilization. It's kind of ingenious, Kevin. They have, they take kelp and they kiln dry it and they ship it out in bags as fertilizer to golf courses. And in drought stricken areas, when you water your golf course, the seaweed absorbs this water. And then rather than watering every day, when the sun hits the seaweed, it releases the water. And then it degrades the seaweed into fertilizer. Okay. That's just one innovative thing. And that's in combination with our friends over in Donegal Island, our sister county. As a result of our efforts, last year I was awarded what they call the Golden Bridges Award. And it was recognition by the Northern Republic of Ireland and, I'm sorry, the Northern Ireland, Belfast and, and the Republic of Ireland for economic development contributions between the countries. It's called the Golden Bridges. So we're bridging the US over to Ireland. And coincidentally, this year, for the second time in a row, Plymouth County is going to be recognized. Where registered John Buckley, Registered Deeds is going to be recognized this year. So that is like out of the realm of like your imagination when you think of, you know, this opportunity that presented itself for Plymouth County to interact with the county of Donegal in an economic way that's tangible. So I forget the, I forget the question, Kevin, but you know, I'll ramble. But no, I, I think it's important for me to get this stuff out. Water, the desalinization piece was the biggest piece that we took out of the conference. And we're going to try to integrate that here. You know, PFAS is big. Water quality is big. And if we're able to work with the Clean Water Trust, the federal government and the Commonwealth, I think we can put together a water resource authority that handles Plymouth County water. And it's, it could be a revenue source, you know, whether we'd be blocked by the people at the MWRA. All I know is this, if it's not Plymouth County, it should be somebody because every single community has to deal with PFAS. And now that the federal government has lowered the standards for pots per, no, pots per billion. Imagine trying to get a microscope on pots per, for that amount. So anyway, that is a tremendous opportunity worth spending the next four years to develop. That's for sure.
How important is the 4H program to the county in maintaining its, its success?
Well, you know, it's funny, we had to go to binding arbitration five years ago with the sheriff on who owned the property. The sheriff had won, but the county, well, he, I'm sorry, didn't win. We all won. I want to just state that, you know, Joe McDonald's a friend of mine, so I don't want to say this in a bad way. He believed he had owned the farm. We believe we did. And to settle the matter, we went to mediation. What happened from there is that the mediator awarded the sheriff a five-year contract. And we, you know, had to live with those results. Along the way though, we got involved with 4H to let them know, listen, we have a growing population in this program. We had about 885 kids at the time. And what we did is we helped them to put together a program of what we called the Field of Dreams. The Field of Dreams was an effort that was put forth by the county in 4H to allow these kids to involve themselves in government. We petitioned the Commonwealth with the help of our good friend, Senator O'Connor. Patrick O'Connor is a involve themselves in government. We petitioned the Commonwealth with the help of our good friend Senator O'Connor, Patrick O'Connor is a gentleman. He answered the call of our 4Hs. They have a government side of 4H. It's not just, you know, animals, husbandry and horticulture. It's patriotism. And we had this group meet for about six to eight months and we built the Field of Dreams. We put a a pro forma, a business plan together on what the county farm would look like after the five years when the when the sheriff was done with the property. And the caveat along the way was a greenhouse. And Senator O'Connor got $150,000 from the legislature to inspire these kids. And Kevin, when I tell you when it comes to government and you see the program and the value of it and then the success. That's what makes it all work for me. But we we assembled it and we've post retirement named it the Dan Pallotta Greenhouse. And he actually assembled it before he retired. And that's just one example, but 4H is growing. And as a matter of fact, the town of Plymouth is growing with its 4H opportunities. They have a vocational program with Mr. Mark Duffy that is all around agriculture, food sustainability, you know, the crisis we're having now, Kevin. Across the country and it's, it aligns with the mission statement. We have 90 acres over there. We have 16 acres for 4H. We have nine acres that the sheriff has under his control. And we just signed a five year lease with the sheriff on a program that we looked to partner with Old Colony Planning Council. It's a food hub and it's a feasibility study. But we're looking forward to working and expanding our 4H program. One of the thought processes, Kevin, on revenue, you're familiar with Nature's Classroom. Was a program locally that was held down in Camp Bourndale. Camp Bourndale is being sold. And so I reached out to the school department, got in a vote, an official recognition of of the process of offering property to see if they would be interested in using the available acreage to develop that program. So that's a DESI program, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, where communities send their schools down to Nature's Classroom and they get educational credit. For us in the county partnering with Plymouth Schools, number one, all those kids would go for free. But number two, the Plymouth teachers would be able to be instructors and gain a little extra money. And the proceeds would be split, you know, between the school department and in the county. Of course, we're not in it for the profit as much as to cover the cost. And then the other program, we're working with Dicky Quinto and Charlie Bletzer, along with Derek Brandezi. They came to our public hearing on the use of the land and expressed interest in building a leadership academy similar to that up in Norfolk County. It starts out with a rope course. It's it's a fantastic program. Mike Pallotti started it 22 years ago. And it allows for you as someone who can employ Plymouth kids to actually instruct Plymouth kids. It's a win win for all of us. It's a summer program. And we're marching down the path of investigating that. But again, you know, November 5th will tell us a lot of what we can and cannot do by who the electorate chooses to lead us, you know.
As we are, our time is winding down. This is kind of like a an open question and that is, is there anything that we haven't discussed or you haven't been asked? That you want to at least take a moment to talk to or maybe something that you we had talked about earlier, but that maybe you might want to re revisit during this conversation?
Well, just overall, I'd just like to say that, you know, Plymouth County is in the best fiscal health it's ever been in. We have gained the trust of our member communities where, you know, prior to me getting here, it was in the tank. In fact, you know, it was almost an abandoned ship. When in the history of the county have two incumbents decided not to run, you know, so you know, there's been a lot of blood, sweat and tears shed, but we wouldn't be able to do it without the fantastic leadership. If you think about it. Tom O'Brien and John Buckley have to sit down annually to create a budget that is real. Last year, we experienced three increases by the Federal Reserve on interest rates that were unaccounted in our budget. However, and this is another thing we did early in our administration, was we created a stabilization fund. So prior to that, Kevin, the county had to spend the money was given in the calendar year. There was no way for us to carry it over. And so what we did, again, we went to our friends in the legislature. And we created that off ramp for us. So any funds that were left over from a previous year could be accumulated. And thank God it, we we did get it passed because when we had a 902,000 structural deficit due to the fact that our prognostication on how many deeds would be transferred and and transacted down at the Registry of Deeds was impacted because there was no transactions going on. We had 900,000 in stabilization and free cash. And we had $3.2 million in our savings account. Okay. To plan for any day. They always say, Kevin, proper planning prevents poor performance. And this is one of the things that, you know, you wouldn't have thought much of it back when we created it. But thank God we had it because then it would have fallen on the burden of the shoulders of our member communities. And not only did we come out of it with that money, right now, the way John Buckley and Tom have put together this year's budget. We're already close to $120,000 ahead of revenues. Now, it helped that the the interest rate changed. But, you know, we've got some talent in Plymouth County. Look at Jeff Welsh, what he's doing with our parking program. He is now into over 60 communities where he created proprietary software for communities all across the state. So we're we're similar to Kelly Ryan where we collect monies. And we get a $3 per transaction fee. It helps our member communities and it pays it pays enough to keep that programming going. So I, you know, I, along the way, I left out some programs and those are the things that, you know, are making a difference now. But I can't say enough about Frank Basler, Nancy O'Rourke. The 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 team down at the Registry of Deeds under the leadership of John Buckley. And and Tom O'Brien is of course, we always say, in Tom we trust. So you know, it's a great group that we have, looking forward to hopefully continuing our programs and and in working together with whoever. And if I'm not the person, I I can leave Kevin with my head held high, that I did my best. I I can say that I made a difference. You know, it wasn't a popular place to be in when I first ran. No one wanted to be county commissioner. And now that we got it turned around, everyone wants to be a county commissioner. That's why we have five candidates. But every one of them, I think, are well intentioned and qualified. How they go to however they campaign is the way they campaign. I try to, you know, look at the positive things we've done and promote, you know, what I can do and not what the other person can. So, so that's it in a nutshell.
Final, final question, and that is if folks want to find out more information about you, how can they do that?
They can go on the county website. I have a direct link, my email's there as well as on Facebook. It's Greg Hanley for County Commissioner. You'll find it. And that's the social media part. They can also find me through my good friend Kevin Tarchi, WATV and the theme down there.
Excellent. Well, we want to thank you so much for joining us for this conversation and we wish we wish you and all the candidates who are running in the November 5th election, the best of luck.
Thank you, Kevin, and I appreciate your time.
All right. We want to thank you all for tuning into a program like this. The idea is to better inform you about folks who are running for office. That's the idea of this series of candidates conversations. Until next time, have a good day.